Good evening, welcome to the June twenty seconds Rochester School Board meeting. We are missing a couple of board members tonight and we're expecting one more to show up here shortly. So that may affect our order for the agenda, but I'll start with the roll call, Michael.
President.
Kim.
President.
Jennifer. That's here. We hope that Neil is able to join us here shortly. Let's move to the flag slew. Okay, first opportunity for public comments for items on the agenda. Okay, so before we move to, we're gonna skip over item three additions deletions of agendas, so we have a quorum in the consent agenda.
If you want to see if the participant online would like to.
Participant online. So if participant online would like to make a public comment, please just enter your name in chat and just to let us know. We'll give that about sixty seconds as we, and we'll use that sixty seconds to figure out what we're gonna do next. So we can do move to old business. Building security, start there.
And there's some decisions that need to be made for all of those, so I would suggest Eagle Scout.
Lucky you. So, hi, my name is Isaac Linkship and I go to the Rochester two nine three one seven here in Grand Mound. Um, that's my still master back there, Jerry Lewinson. Um, so my project plan is right here back in Independence Park. So as you might know that you guys put in the new gate around the basketball hoop or basketball court. And the ramp doesn't match up with the gate. So part of my plan was to go in and lay some new asphalt in and make a new ramp, just so it's more accessible for that. Another part was the planter boxes, they're kind of getting old and don't look the nicest right now. So just completely take those out and put new ones in and plant plants in that will last all year and don't require a lot of maintenance from at least the people that work here. And then all the covered eating areas to put some dirt down to even out the transitioning between the ground to the concrete. Because that's a little lip that people can trip on. Like my mom has trouble troubles still in the wheelchair to get up into it, just to make it more acceptable for just what disabilities. And if we have elderly or young people, just to make it easier. And then the last thing was just that final parking spot at the back near the fence for the basketball hoop. To get rid of that one little parking spot and turn it into a van accessible spot, because the only one that we have here is by the teen center. Which is a decent distance from the park. And so I have my workbook here. And so I have talked to three different companies for the asphalt, the dirt, and then the lumber. So I went to Rochester lumber and they have given me an estimated price and they're gonna give back to me on any donations or any of that. But my total price for everything. I about about seven hundred twenty bucks for the whole project to be completed. And that's not including if any company decides to donate any of their materials or any time for it. And then that's not including if I have any tools or anyone that I know personally or the community has any tools that they're willing to donate themselves. Is there any questions about my project at all?
How long do you think it's, what's your project plan for duration?
So my plan is hopefully to get it started mid to late July, so I have time for fundraising for any costs. And any costs that I have to pay for. And then I'm hoping it won't take more than two to three weeks depending on the asphalt company that I've been talking to said that they might be able to come and transport the asphalt. And some of their employees can come and donate some of their time to help us just build a ramp themselves. So we're gonna see if we can work around with their schedule too, just so that's easier on us to do it, because I'm not the most experienced at that myself. So if I can get more help with them, that'd be great.
Yeah.
So I would say two to three weeks, hopefully.
Fantastic.
Do you have any fundraising ideas?
So, um, we've done GoFundMe's, the Larry Chevron over here. They are pretty good with letting us do car washes, so that's another idea. Uh, that's the two big ones I've had, but I've been trying to bring some a few more ideas to get that cost revenue, so I can do this.
Is it Rochester lumber may donate some considering that?
Yeah.
Have an asphalt company that's.
Yeah, they said they'll donate. Might donate or they might give me a discount on it.
That's a pretty astute of you to find all those things, like there's a certain eye to kind of go through there and see where improvements, but also a lot of work for that amount of money. By the seven hundred, you can't do much for seven hundred dollars, it's like anymore, so you bet a lot, a lot to cover for that amount.
Yeah.
Seems like a lot to raise, but you're doing good work with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's really cool.
I would encourage you to contact the office here when you set your fundraisers to let people know.
Alright.
Getting the word out.
Great, sweet.
Very good.
Congratulations, good luck.
Yes.
Can't wait to see you, see you starting this.
Is this the Eagle Scout project or?
So he, the only thing I don't get from the board is actual approval, so we already got approval from the maintenance supervisor. Obviously, we talked to him, he was the one that told us we had to do asphalt, because originally we were gonna do concrete, because I can actually help with concrete. I've never done asphalt though, I can't, I don't know how to do it, so. But he's the one that said they need to be asphalt, so we've already talked with him. The bunch will need from you guys is actual a signature saying that you guys are good for us to start this project and then we'll start setting up fundraisers and get the ball rolling.
I, I think that just takes the superintendent's signature.
Yeah, my name is Jerry Lewis.
Very.
Yes.
Jay.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Jerry, how many students have you had that have received or are working on their Eagle Scout project? Do you have a count?
We've had a lot this last summer, so Adam, William, Aaron, Hunter, Willie, and now Isaac is number six this year. And so we've had a lot of products around the community, uh, we did the we did the amphitheater at Gay Schoolhouse, the whole stage and seating area. Trail at the high school, high school, made the half mile track. We had a sign made for Gay Schoolhouse, there's a reader board on the corner now, we had a flag pole installed at Gay Schoolhouse, there was no flag pole there, so there's a flag pole there now. Uh, and then we did, uh, a young man that made picnic tables for both Sweet Hall and Gay Schoolhouse. And then now Young, you're working on Independence Park here to make it any accessible to. Oh, and Jacob, we have one more that's, he's making flag boxes.
Oh, that's right.
Place around town, so he had to come for that actually. Yeah, so he's gonna be putting those at the fire stations and hopefully one at Gay Schoolhouse, three in total. So there's three around town for people to drop off flags to be retired properly.
Thank you for raising a good young men and women. Partner together, right?
So we appreciate your guys' time, we're gonna get out of here then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Impressive.
Neil is on his way.
Neil's on his way. So should we take a five minute break?
Yeah, and I brought snacks. Not that I knew. You don't have to, but.
We, you know, this is Justin, if you want to unmute yourself and, and explain that, I got permission from the board for you to, to talk about the event.
Oh, thank you so much. So just so you know, I'm up here at the Seattle Rep getting ready to watch the show, the play Bruce with my son Nick. So excited, mommy and Sunday. So, oh, I gotta keep my mask on, sorry. So we're, we're proposing to have this wonderful adventure called Big Bus, No Big Deal. And it's gonna give people an opportunity who are a little hesitant about stepping into a bus. We also would like to have the kindergarten bus there, so that kiddos who aren't familiar with the bus can come and enjoy it and learn a bus. And we're thinking to have John Dyer, I don't know if you guys are familiar with him, but he is probably one of the sweetest drivers we've got to make all the kiddos feel welcome. We're also gonna have the stuff the bus there and we're gonna be doing a raffle and then we'll be offering free hot dogs and cotton candy and popcorn and soda. Um, we will also like to extend a, a welcome to our new superintendent. If she would like to hang out with us for the day, because there's nothing more fun than a bunch of bus drivers, I'm gonna tell you that right now.
Sounds wonderful.
So. It's July twenty third, it'll be from eleven to two, it's a Saturday.
And that's in the parking lot here, right, right in front of Roof, Leanna?
No, it's gonna be at the middle school.
Oh, middle school, okay.
Yes. So yeah, and we're gonna be reaching out to Boys and Girls Club and Roof and other local entities to see if they'd like to set up some stuff there. Possibly reach out to our coaches to see if they want to do signups there as well to make it just a giant event.
Alright. Thanks, Leanna.
Thank you.
Somebody's gotta fix that, he's gonna fall and break her neck.
Nope, she's not supposed to walk through there. It's Leanna, I'm good.
Alright, thank you guys so much.
Thank you for all you do.
Nobody has any questions, I'm good then.
Yep, good to go.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else up here that I could do? We can talk about security and just not make any motions until later.
We have to retalk security.
That's true. Okay, um, what can we do?
What did Leanna call the bus day?
She called it.
A big deal.
Yep, big bus, no big deal.
Thank you.
And just step away, is it to just help recruit bus drivers?
Help recruit bus drivers, bring down, they, they wanna bring down kiddos and, you know, that haven't ridden a bus and get on a bus and see that it's, it's all good and I saw that, I've been around. Summer school, your day, summer school started, is that what it was?
Sure, you can just say, okay, well, we started summer school. So we started summer school yesterday, it's a K through twelve program that we're offering again this summer. And so, uh, we have about a hundred and forty students, K through eighth grade. And then we have about fifty students that are ninth through twelfth grade. And so K through seven is, is again an enrichment opportunity, a chance to, you know, to, um, to to get our literacy and our, and our academic skill up, up, up to par. Um, it was an invite only, so we, we targeted families that were at risk of literacy and are social emotional. Um, because of some of the staffing and things, really if we did have parents that reached out and say, can my child attend? We were able to, to provide them some space as well, so, um, but we were pretty strategic about who we invited for, at first. Um, so students do a rotation of, of three rotations, we're about an hour and five minutes each. So one rotation is called Lit Camp, so we do this as a theme, like a camping theme, so we have you know, lots of different fun camping things to make it interesting for them, and so there's a Lit Camp which really focuses on uh, social emotional skills and literacy, so the program that we offer is, is called Lit Camp. And it does embed some social emotional, like, you know, caring and belonging and, you know, cooperation and kind of just those tied it how to, to work together types of skills along with some literacy and some skill foundations. Uh, the second rotation that kids participate in is a STEM piece of that, so a lot of inventions. Uh, we have our STEM teacher at Grand Mound that is, is kind of created the lessons for that. So there are inventions, there's some science, there's some math, lots of experience, experiments, hands-on type of activities. And then the third rotation that they do is an arts and activity rotation, and that's where they do uh, painting and crafts and, you know, we've got a, uh, the eighth graders are doing watercolors and, and doing some painting that way. So, um, so we try to make it fun, I mean, obviously we sprinkle a lot of the academics where we can, that's why, that's why we're there. But we really want kids to enjoy it and be like, this school is a great place to, to be. So, so we are, like I said, day two down, um, and huge shout out to the, the staff that are giving up their time. For, for, uh, for our kids to go, so we will run through July fourteen. Credit retrieval is up at the high school, so again, we have about fifty kids that are waiting on retrieving credit, I think we're unsuccessful. At, at, uh, in the school year, so they are going to a humanities class and a math class, which are in person, and then the rest of the classes, we offer online, but we have supports there for students. Who, uh, wants to get into access. Rockin' and rollin'.
Make summer school southbound, huh?
Come on down. We've got these little inflatable. In there that, yeah, they're a little inflatable, we have a picture while our kids can take a picture.
Is it four days a week or five?
It's four days a week and it's only in the mornings, eight thirty to noon. We do offer lunch onsite, so we are doing a summer lunch program again, so, so is offering that free lunch.
Thank you very much. If you're gonna get a little update about what you did today.
Yeah, so, um, we had ad council that got together today, it was all the principals. Maggie and Laura and Justin, myself, and we did a little bit of reflection on the year. And what went well during the year, really some celebrations about, on what went well. Really acknowledging the fact that this was an unexpected, very difficult year. Um, but the, the real celebration was everybody had some really good learning celebrations to, to, to celebrate and talk about and share. And good work by teachers and, um, really, you know, and students, so a lot of celebrations. Um, then we started to work on, um, what are we gonna be looking at as we move forward into next year? And, and what's the work gonna be, took some input from, uh, building administrators about how we can support them in their work and um, moving forward, um, looking at a social emotional learning standards. Um, worked a little bit of, um, the PLC and the next steps that we're gonna be doing with PLCs and then, um, also next steps with UDL and how it's aligning with the, all of the big picture work that we're doing, so really good day. I think we left it a good place. Maggie and, and Laura and Justin and I are coming together next week on Monday and Tuesday to do some more work to plan for August. So, um, we have our, our checklist of things that we need to get done. So, great day.
Alright, I think that got us to about where we need to be.
Alright, welcome Neil. Glad you're here.
Something for a brownie.
We have a quorum, um, we're gonna move to, uh, to item three additions, we have four additions to the agenda. There are no questions about those, I will make a motion to approve the addition to the agenda, I guess. Any other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Alright, additions added, moving to the consent agenda, uh, long list items. Hopefully everyone had, every such chance to look through those, is there any questions on any items in the consent agenda? If not, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda, I guess a second.
Neil, I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye. I don't have one comment, I, I imagine Sue Holmes is coach for a lot of years.
In like all good sports.
Yeah, yeah, I saw her, I didn't give up the.
Nice. Okay, moving to item five, old business, uh, first item of building security.
Alright, so I'm gonna get us started and then count on Justin to provide some additional information, um, as you know, we left our last board meeting with I'm just, I'm gonna disable your screen and. Alright, so we lot, less, left last meeting, um, with you know, a list of things to do in the security area and those included, right, one more, oh, I think we're gonna get it this time. Here we go.
Okay, I'll get there, you keep going.
So, um, to look at adding control, access control, so that doors can be locked. Particularly, we talked about front doors and then, you know, being able to view somebody's credentials and their face at the door, um, and then buzz them in. And, um, we also discussed additional exterior fencing around the perimeter of, of our grounds. And so Justin and Ed went straight to work in, um, reaching out to contractors and various providers. And so, um, next slide here should show you, um, what a front entry system would, um, can include, so the, the area that's encompassed with the blackout line that Justin has cursor on there. And that is similar to what you would see at the front door. So there's a camera there and a little button to push on speaker. And then the, the phone-like apparatus has a video screen and that is an additional phone unit that would be put on the desk of two or more, um, workstations within each office. Um, so that they can, um, check to see who is out there. And we did ask some questions about the quality of the video screen around whether or not it could actually, if somebody held their ID up to it, would they really be able to ascertain what it said? Or is it gonna be all disfigured and blurry and all that? And is, was told that it would be sufficient to be able to read a document. Justin, other things that you want to talk through about that?
It's, uh, it, it really is a closed system, so it's not reworked through another phone system or anything like that. We wanna keep it as a separate, for troubleshooting purposes and for other, other reasons. So it's just, it really is a direct, a direct wire from the front door into our network and then network right to that phone box. So it's a, it really is a closed system, it's not connected to any other thing. And then, um, the, you know, it's a, it, it allows for a five to seven second momentarily unlock of the front door. Um, and they're loud enough, you just, you hear the door click and then you know, you know, it's, it's like all those sitcoms you've watched and in, over the years, when they buzz them in in those big cities, right? So, but this one's video.
Question, is, is it, um, is it a security camera, like is it keep the, keep the feed for so many days?
No, it's not, it's not gonna keep feed, no, it's just a, a live feed right then, just.
But we do have security.
So if somebody has a knife, it's the regular security pickup people that are intruding.
Um, as you might see here on the timeline aspect of this, it is gonna take a while to get the parts to be able to, to this project. So it's, this is not a quick thing, so Justin, you wanna talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, it's gonna take a while. We, we are looking at three, three to six months and, uh, the, um, the contractor said probably close to six. He said if, you know, only needing, uh, four, there's a really outside possibility that he might be able to cobble together, you know, from his distributors, four of them, but wasn't thinking it was going to happen. And it's not because, you know, there's been a rush on him, he's like, I, I ordered these things and they take three to six months to come in for the last two years. It's, it's, it's what it is, um, uh, and it does, it does align in with our current access control. So interfaces with, with that, so, you know, that, that's a, that's another, that's another big deal, it's not an additional system and software. It will, it will align with our current, um, software that, that we use for our door portals and everything, so. And the, the company is, uh, CTS that we work with, the, the nice thing about CTS is um, they are on state contract, DES contract, so that, that, that works out really well. The other thing, it is a company out of Tacoma, but the, um, the person that comes out and does quotes is actually lives in our community. Um, and, and so, and, uh, has had kids go through our system and whatnot, so, you know, we, we, we do get really, really good customer service from, from this company. And I've used them for about twelve years now to do, to do work, so, um, it's, it has been a good, a good situation with the company, so.
And we didn't, when at the time of making the slides, we didn't have the quote back, but that arrived today, so.
Yeah.
Talk through that.
Yep, so, uh, what, what I did is, we, we, John Horga of CTS, uh, and, and I did walk through of the buildings. Um, and, and so at RPS, uh, at intercom phone system. Um, and then also adding, uh, access control on all the, the back doors, um, of, so each of the grade level wings. Um, plus the, the door that goes out toward the, toward the gym, so it can be locked during the school day and, and teachers can access card for themselves and, and then also, um, on the, the gym door that, uh, that kids enter to go to gym would also be an additional access, so this building actually requires the most, um, additional access, uh, control. So we're looking at, uh, three, four, five additional, plus the front, plus the front door intercom system. Um, so this one has the most, um, additions, uh, in order to secure all of the doors, so that the main building can remain locked uh, once school starts. Um, at, at Grand Mounds, um, there was already a few extras put in there, so we're, we were only looking at the video intercom system on the front door. Um, and then access, access control, um, being added to, um, where the special ed, special education classroom um, suite kind of is out there, so that, that building could also remain, remain locked. The gym door already had, has that in the back door, Grand Mound already has access control on it, so those can all, all remain, remain locked. And if you are looking at the quote, you'll notice, um, there's a lot more things listed, so, uh, while, while we have them there. Um, you know, our, our ballast and our doors can use a key to come out, so we can, you know, drive in pallets and things across there. But one of the things that we have found, uh, in the last eight or nine years that we've had, had those is that the, when, um, people are putting back the posts, because they're, they're wired down through the palace. Metal sharpen, they tend to, uh, you know, skin the wires and all of a sudden Sean is like, uh, Justin, the access control doesn't work. So, uh, I've, I've asked them to put quick disconnects on all of them, so that we have less maintenance i- in, in the future. While they're here, it's cheaper to have them than have, have them come out and do it on, on a one-off as, as they, as they break. Um, so that's, that is a total of Grand Mounds, so then next we went over to the high school. Uh, obviously the video intercom system, um, and then access control on the left-hand door. Um, and, uh, of the, of the high school, just in case, uh, in, in the next while, if there was any kind of wanting to. And of the, of the high school, just in case in the next while, if there was any kind of wanting to build that internal. Vestibule that we would already be set up and have to do any additional work. After, after the fact, if, if that was another step that wanted to, you guys wanted to do at the high school level. So I was trying to think ahead and, and add those. And then the only other one that we needed was the north door. In the 100, 200 hallway, which heads out to portables. Nine through 16 or 17. Just to, just to make sure that was, that's the last door that we really need access control there. Then flipping over to the middle school, video intercom system on the front door. And then there is the eighth, end of the eighth grade hall, which goes out towards the fitness portable. Getting access control on that door. And then there's two back doors, one out seventh grade hallway and one midway in that eighth grade hallway. That goes out to the back portables and getting access control on those. The rest of the doors, sixth grade hallway, we don't send, ever send kids out that way. So those doors just remain locked. The other doors at middle school already had access control on them. So we would be, we would be good there. The other thing I, I like about CTS is eight or nine years ago, when we put, eight years ago, when we put the system in. It is the exact same installer still works for this company and would come out and do this job. So the, the person that would be installing, I've worked with multiple times. He, he is a great guy and he knows. He knows the system and he's gonna build it and he knows our buildings. He's gonna do a really good job for us. So and he lives locally actually in Australia. So we've been able to really develop good relationships with this, with this particular company. So. Questions for me on that? You want me to talk about the other?
Why?
Piece of that.
About the total.
Yeah, so. Yep, the grand total. For that, for that area with tax and everything, we'd come right around to $156,000 would be the approval that would be needed. To do those intercom systems and add 11. Access controls and then put the quick, the quick connects on, on the current ones that are there. And so, you know, installation, it's about $70,000 in labor and $70,000 in materials plus tax and, and things like that. So taxes quite a bit on a. Hundred and forty some thousand dollar project. So. So that would be that, that part of it. While he was with me and we were, we were, you know, going around, I asked him as a, as an optional add on. What would it, what would it cost? For us to add each portable at the primary and elementary? Into the system. And so knowing that as long as the, the portable doors are the crash bar style. And then we can use the access control. He gave us a price of 12, two. By the time you add tax and everything, it's about 13, seven per portable. Yeah, oh, it's good. So when we look at, it's about $100,000 at Grand Mound and $100,000 in RPS. To add access control to each one of those portable doors. Which, which would be, you know, the, the portals would then be blocked at all times. You know, teachers would have. Anywhere between three and five hall passes that. Would have a access card and so they would scan back in their classroom. They'd scan into the building if they need to go to the building, that kind of thing. So there, there would be no, no need, you know, to, for teachers to walk over and use the Allen wrench and, and uncrash the bar on the door so that their classroom is locked. So, so I thought I would get that price. I was, I was actually kind of surprised it was that high. I was. I was thinking it was gonna be like a third of that per portable, but apparently inflation. So and then as we, the alternate two on there, as we add in eventually. Once we go over 32 ports, access controls will need to upgrade to a 64 port and that'll be an additional 5,500, $5,500 plus tax. To get a bigger brain in the system in order to, to handle the extra doors. So without doing the double portables, we, we would not have to do the upgrade. Based on the, the first part of the quote.
Is there an ongoing maintenance costs, software?
No, no, we don't. In fact, I think last time we've done one software maintenance update and I think it was like 1,500 bucks and we haven't done one in three or four years and. I, you know, we keep in contact with the company. They're like, no, don't do it. Or they tell us, yes, you need to do it because now it's gonna work with this or no, it's not worth your money. So they're, they're usually pretty good with us and make, make sure that we get the software we need. So and Sean is really good at the software. So.
Does this system operate on like a battery backup?
No, so if the power goes out, they, the, the doors automatically just stay locked. Keys will still work. We'll still have the, you know. But you have the power, if power goes out, it's not like all the doors go unlocked. They actually go automatically to lock as the power goes out. So there's now. Trying to think if I have. No, I do not have those on battery backup. I have networks and phones on battery backup. I don't have the access controls because we'll just default to a manual key. So. The, the amount that it would cost to get battery backups for them and, and the amount of time that we need them just financially doesn't make a ton of sense. So.
In our experience of people. Being a little suspicious or a little problematic coming onto the campuses. Is it? You know, 99% are coming into the front door and. Worrisome there. Has anybody ever gone to the portables and caused a wreck?
Had that experience. But we haven't had people who are coming to cause, you know.
I don't mean bad, bad, but just.
I mean, just.
Wrong person coming to pick up the kid and getting.
Yeah, that still come through the front door has been our experience to date, but.
And, and I think we, we really have a lot less of that. Because they don't know where our SRO is.
Yeah.
I, I think in the last three or four years, there, there's definitely been a lot less since an SRO has been around our campuses that, that parents don't come in as hot. I think as they, as potentially they used to a few years ago. But yeah, it's still the front door and, and, you know, last meeting you, you guys approved a project for over by the, the preschool. So that fence that's over where the buses load now at the primary school is going from a four foot fence to a six foot fence. So there is gonna be an added deterrent there. You know, six foot fence does provide quite a bit of deterrent even when you're agile and able to move. So.
And when you. I, I know you have to have some discussion about whether to just approve that initial package and then wait for the other or whether you, whatever you want to do with that. And then we'll start talking about fencing. But when we talk about fencing and the fire lane gates right now, one of the things when. This is being bid for fencing, which is, it has worked on. Talked about changing that as well from being those, just a swinging low.
Barricade.
Barricade, yes, to an actual chain link where people again would be a deterrent to. Wandering onto campus.
And then again, those, those gates would then also need to be hooked into this access control system as well. For delivery purposes, keypad purposes, being able to access back parking lots staff in, in certain situations. So we, we would want to tie those type of gates also into the access control. So it's, it's a one card. For, for staff, give, give staff certain access. Who needs access to that back gate during work time so that they can get in and out if it may be.
If you're in a gate, it's not just unlocking, it's opening and closing.
Yeah.
So the.
Yeah, so, right. So, yeah, so the fence contractor would come in and do their work and then a, a company like CTS would then come back and. They would then install the access control. It is something I did ask them and it is something they, they've done. I, I think in, in the last couple of years, they've done 80 to 100. Gate access controls. So they don't install, they work with fence contractors, but they don't, they don't install the gates, but they've now done this. COVID has kind of brought that on because. I've been people to man some of these places and, and the in-person security. So a lot of companies have, have gone to this process. And so they've gotten really pretty good at it. So.
That's, that's the entry system piece. Maybe we should talk about the fencing piece and then circle back around to what it's like to, to have us to. Oh, this is the access control. You guys know what I'm like. So fencing, looking at a five foot fence. And did have somebody out but hasn't received quote yet. From the installers, but he has marked out all the different locations around the district and where there needs to be a different type of gate and. When there needs to just be a taller fence as opposed to a new fence. So he's worked on all of that, but as I think everybody except for Neil. Now, there was a tragic death and its family today. And so that's why we don't have some of this information. We'll circle back and there'll be a proposal for you for fencing costs on. July 13th, the next part. But this will be a considerable cost as well. So I, I do not have an estimate for it. Apologize. So really is discussing what. Actually you want to take now. So that, the, so that if you really do want something to happen, that six month timer can get started because. Pretty long time, right?
Grant, I don't know if we want to do it now or later. I mean, part of it's getting the material equipment and there's also like. Well, how much do we use it? Is it on during school hours and then? If four o'clock, when all the after school activities happens, is it? We stayed locked down or do we just open things up? I don't like the procedures, I guess, around all this stuff. And the fencing, even the fencing, like computers come in and on weekends and walk over and use playground equipment and stuff like that, like. How?
Yes.
That kind of stuff. I don't know if we've talked about or need to talk about or that comes later.
Were you gonna say?
That's a good question. Good point.
No, I think there are all kinds of protocols that have to be built and put in place.
Yeah. Later.
I mean, that would get, that would get started on those types of things. So that. In that six month period of time, that could all be taken care of and trained for. So there.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense.
The other thing that. You guys had asked for was. Staffing for high school because really there's still a pretty significant security issue there. And so. If that would be the other thing that we'd want you to take action on is yes, move forward with that and then that will result in Joe posting a position.
So. $156,000 ish for the, for buildings. And about $100,000. For portables at the primary, $100,000 for the portals with GMS.
Yep, 55 at RMS and 110 at the high school. You're doing thing here.
This is included in the initial.
So we, we have access control already here at the, at the district office for this building in for heart or this is. No, that doesn't include, that doesn't include heart. That's 15,000 or whatever they quoted. Right, so heart. Heart would be 13,700. As they do have the correct kind of doors, they do have the crash bars. So. You know, if, you know, if we didn't do the portables and whatnot, there actually wouldn't be a bad idea. To do heart along with the initial 156,000. Parts kind of always hung out there a little, a little bit, you know, with some things. And this would give them the ability to just have their doors. Locked and then, you know, once school starts and then they can unlock them at lunchtime type deal. We can give them access so they can actually just use a button. In the software to, to lock and unlock their doors as they see fit. So, so if we were to do, do hard and it would be one 169, so no more than $170,000. Yeah. Part in that.
Just money. Just money. Couple of questions. Speaking of money, I'd sent out an email about a month and a half ago. About having the attorney for the district contact the county. Have you gotten a response back yet?
He wrote, the attorney. Shared with us. Information. I, I don't think there's a lot to do. I mean, I, I don't.
Well, is there any funding coming down from the federal government or from the state for this type of stuff for all the districts in the state?
There's discussion.
I was gonna say they, they continue to make more action at the federal level. Was that yesterday or today?
Senate passed.
Senate passed it.
Yes.
Yeah, anyway, within the last 24 hours or so, what we don't know yet is how much that will equate to like per district. It will be allocated per district. Will it be allocated in a, a. Competitive grant, that part will to be determined. So we don't yet know.
Good. Fortunately or unfortunately, with the six month timeline, probably prior to get materials. Maybe there'll be some action by then. And so the money you, you would spend on this, maybe, maybe there's some to offset that. So.
I just, I, I really think we need to pursue with the county before open occupancy takes place over at Maple Lane. Nigga, if we need to put something in place with the attorney. Where we have to be, we should be compensated. We signed that letter, I think it was 2018. And, yeah, there should be mitigation fees for the type of behavioral problems of the people that are going to be sent over there. These aren't just kids throwing rocks through windows. It seems that from what I've read, these are people that are up there for capital crimes. That are going to be there for having mental evaluations and that is way too close to our schools.
So there, there's two different projects there. And so there's, there's time and opportunity to still work on mitigation for the larger project that they are considering there. It's the, the smaller one that's under construction at this time.
Yeah, but Department of Health, DOH.
Yep, that one I, we're not gonna get anything in mitigation from them.
Very disappointed. There's something, I didn't even know there was anything going on there until we went to the school and had our meeting. I'm like, well, this is new. You know, with COVID and stuff, it's like. And yeah, we should have.
Yeah, that's the one that we, you know, we've already. Sent information from the board to them about etc.
Years ago and nothing, nothing from the county because the county is the one that has to issue the permits.
And they allowed.
And they did. They're allowing to build, but for them to take occupancy of that site and actually do their business, that also still has to be approved. So if there's anything that you could do, now's the time to do it. Especially with, how much are we looking at here? $340,000? To do all of our schools? We, we need that, but anything to help fund, help take the, take the debt off of the local taxpayers. And states right there, I think we should really look at that. It's my opinion. Because local taxpayers are paying a lot for our school district already. And. Just my opinion.
Yeah, but the whole thing's taxpayer dollars, right? The challenge is we, we sent a letter saying with our concerns and asking for mitigation and the county approved, approved the bill without providing. Mitigation to us. So they've, they've already done that. We can ask again.
I think we should. But. Construction is one thing, but when for them to take occupancy. That's a different thing. Right now we gotta go file a thing with the local courts or whatever with the attorney and let them know, hey, we're serious. Injunction for, for they can even take. Possession of the property, just put people in there. Because we, we, we've had people from that, from that facility when it was DOA or not DOH, but it was DOC was running it and they broke into the schools already. So we already have a situation where something has already occurred on school property from people that were at that property.
That was DSHS.
Was DSHS then? I thought it was Department of Corrections.
They're doing competency restoration for Western State Hospital. So it's, it's DSHS.
Yeah, yeah, it's state.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, yeah, because it's a different department now that's running that facility. So, okay, I've expressed my concerns and, you know, something we should look at. It's my opinion.
So I, I sent, I forwarded the response from our attorney to Jennifer. So she has that. Can figure out next steps for that.
I mean, one thing possibly we could do to her is.
I mean, one thing possibly we could do to her is have the county come to a board meeting and explain, okay, what is the. Ongoing planning for there and have a conversation. Yeah. Absolutely. Okay.
And for security funding, you know, federal levels, you know, some things are appear to be moving. Can we, can we play? We don't, we don't know what the outcome is gonna be and what the mechanism will be at a state level. We likely won't, that won't be brought up until January of next year, next session and so. With the outcome would be a year from now. But hopefully, you know, keep that conversation going if there's some sort of a.
Oh, the branch.
Or just, you know, something to level the playing field a bit for smaller districts or not requiring the bond. To be able to do some of the things, you know, we want to do, because all school districts need, need it.
Absolutely. Yeah. The total bill for the staff, the fencing. The doors. Including the portables. What's the total package of the cap nine?
You don't know what the fencing cost is.
Oh, yeah, access, access control with all portables and everything would be close to half a million. That's inclusive of the staff in the high school, just the building and security. We talked about so. That would, that would be access control for the, for all four buildings, including heart.
So that does.
All the portables, everything. We're, we're talking close to half a million dollars.
Okay, so with the staff person, it's another, it's like six fifty or something or six, six.
Uh, what's, what's a staff person?
Well, depending on the level, but probably about sixty five.
That's total a year. Oh.
Okay. That's slow. Wow.
Yeah.
We're not happening about a commissioned office. So another commissioned officer is on a cusp to.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
There's more.
Thank you.
That is attached, but I haven't heard any discussion on that one. It says.
There is actually attachment for those, for the doors.
The high school.
Which is another safety issue. Would be on the southwest set of doors. From the. Go, they go from the end of the bleachers into that little.
The locker room outcomes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Little foyer and then out. It's that set of doors there.
And they're, they're.
They need to be replaced in order to change the. They're, they're not worth adding new hardware to because they're so old and used.
If, if we went with the portables, I know these portables. Were out over time. Does this? Does a thirteen thousand I'm paying for? That's something that we get to sort of keep using or?
It, it all, it all depends on the type of door lock or the setup of the exit of doors, exit of portable.
So most likely not.
Node itself, the, the, the brain that would, that, the, the. It's not the brain, it's like the sub brain though, node off that sits in portable. Yes, we would be able to use that node someplace else, but not necessarily. Uh, the switches on the, on the door lock. So the, the, the nice thing is. At three of our buildings, the, the middle school, the primary school and the, and the elementary school, all of the doors are from the exact same manufacturer and the exact same. Uh, door latches, which ma- makes it easier that, you know, for the installer, um, they will get better and faster at those things. And so, you know, that, that makes it real simple, but the portables have. Different, I mean, it's.
Right next to each other, different.
Yeah, it's, it was whatever door manufacturer they used that year to build the portable, right? I mean, that's the. That's the hard, that's the hard thing. And, and I will tell you, there are some, some doors at the high school on portables that may need. Major door hardware changing in order to be able to keep access control to work on those. So.
About half the bid is labor for installation. Yeah, a reuse would be.
Right, because everything's a prevailing wage on a school district site.
So around six hundred. For everything minus the fencing. And we don't have really an idea if that's gonna be a hundred or two hundred or three hundred or.
So, you know, one, one of my things would be to. You know, get, get the, the, that base.
Buildings.
The, the base buildings. Yep, get, get the access control on the base buildings, get those intercoms in. And then, you know, I think once fencing goes in and, and you know, or, or some other things. Then I think we could reevaluate whether or not there's some other additional pieces you want to put in places. You know, and to see, you know, do the, after doing some of the, some of the work and putting some protocols and procedures in place. Is, is that what we really think is going to be necessary or do we think there's still more beyond that, that? That we need to do in order to, to do some things, but I, I would, I, I think at least the intercoms and some of the, the additional access control. It's a really good place to at least start the, start the process.
Because portables can be locked.
Yeah.
And kids knock.
Yeah.
To gain entry. I mean, if, if that is the, if the district determines that that is how we're gonna run our buildings. And then you just tell teachers, if you're in a portable, you keep your doors locked. So then, I mean, there's a way to secure those doors without.
Without.
And everybody, everybody in all the buildings. Knows how to do an all call over the intercom from the phone in their classroom. Um, it's, it's, that's not actually a normal thing from other school districts, other school districts, you call the office and, but our, our teachers all have the access to the intercom system to call a lockdown. Um, no matter who, who it is. So typically we can get to things really quick. And, and by the time someone gets to a portable, that thing's typically going to be locked. Um, the, you know, we typically don't have to, you know, people roaming around campuses, especially I think if there's an extra set of eyes at the high school. To be honest with you, I really don't, I don't see a need for access control on each of the portables. If you have another set of eyes that's able to be around and, and see things. Um, and the middle school campus is so condensed, that walk is not as, as far. Um, and I think with some fencing mitigation, I think we can take care of some of those other, those other pieces. And, and for people to get to the backside of the primary and the elementary school, it's, it's, it's not easy to get to the backside. Um, and the one time we did have someone on the backside, it was middle of night. You, you know, and it's not with no kids there, nobody, nobody was there or what. So it, it's not something that we, we.
The doors are locked already.
Yeah, and front doors are gonna be locked and gates are, gates are shut and, and things are done, right? And, and we have lots of people, lots of adults around watching. For things. Our, our staff does a very, very good job of stranger danger. You know, they are extremely protective of our kiddos.
So now, how would you feel about, we approved the. The initial security upgrades for the buildings at plus heart. So about a hundred and seventy thousand, up to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We're not taking, we're approving, we're gonna move, agreeing to move ahead with that now. The other stuff is still kind of on the shelf to look at. We wait for the fencing bid.
I'd add the staff.
And as, I'm sorry, and add the staff. I think that gives us room to, to move forward. We could talk about, we stuff, talk about policies and procedures. Once we have those in place, you know, after school, there's a ballgame, there's, you know, that kind of thing. And we can also talk about, you know, maybe changing the policy that those. Portables are locked all the time and you knock and, you know, teachers there at the start of class.
That's what given just driving crazy. People kept knocking on the door, but you know.
But I think other districts do it. I mean, there are ways other districts have to do it. Yeah.
And some of our teachers do as well. It's just not a matter of post.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I mean, it gets us moving.
Yeah.
It gets the, the main entrance. About more than just the main entrance, but it gets us access control for the main buildings.
Yeah, I was thinking of the middle school. I mean, the other schools are more set back. They're not like right up on the main roads, but the, the middle school's right here. Busy road, lots of traffic, lots of random people in the area. That might not have any business there. Or it could be having a mental episode or whatever, but so like the mitigation stuff, are you like thinking of putting a bigger fence in along the front there to really lock down access? So you only have one or two ways?
I don't think necessarily the, the front, on, on, on the sites to keep anything in the front of the building and not get around back is, is more the mitigation. Um, you know, you know, I think there, there, there comes a point at which I think if you stick a fence up along highway twelve, you're, you're starting to look like Maple Lane. Um, and, and then I think you're gonna have some other issues there. It'd be great for truancy, but probably not so much for, you know, other, other things, but, um, but I think to, to make sure that, 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 the backside of the building. Uh, is, is there. I think the, the one thing that middle school actually has going for it, and I don't think the architect meant to do it that way, but it's hard to find the front door at the middle school. Uh, at times, if you're, if you're a new person, right? You're, you go to places and all those doors are all locked, you know, and, and so. Um, while, while it's, it's, it's somehow a security measure. I'm not sure how, but it is.
Just to go to the, the one door that's closest to the road is the one that's right by the gymnasium and.
Those are always locked. Yeah, yeah, those are never unlocked. Yeah.
Okay. Cool.
Do you want to make a motion?
So how, so how about, how about this? I'll make a motion that we approve the. Access control for the, for main buildings plus heart. Uh, up to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And we'll leave that motion at that. We'll make it to promotion for the staff.
Yeah, I'll second.
Your discussion?
No.
On favor, say aye.
Aye. And obviously, you know, I will continue to work on him around his pricing.
Could we do the, the gym doors next and then talk about the staffing? So the high school gym doors were seventeen thousand, four hundred and forty six dollars, eighty four cents, plus tax. Twenty grand.
Yeah.
Let's talk then free, so.
Oh, it's great.
And train maybe up to twenty five.
Yes.
So they're heavy.
There you go. Pick those up, Joe.
Sound like for five grand, you are.
I've lost temporary access to my computers. You guys are in your second motion to approve the interior doors of the high school.
Yeah.
For up to twenty five thousand dollars now.
With tax and shipping.
But that up to twenty five thousand dollars in total to include, you have tax and shipping.
So as Sean just described. I'll move. As described. Second.
I'll second that.
I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
What three of us, I don't know, you say send a post. Okay, so the. The next time was a security staff or additional staffing at the high school. So about sixty five thousand dollars.
Dollar amount, you can say higher than staff and do a review of competitive salaries.
Okay.
With higher than a person, we don't need that one.
Okay.
And just for, I guess if you have a question, is it just? During school hours, nine months of the year? I mean, is that why it's lower like that is?
Yeah.
And they don't come to ball games or things like that necessarily?
And you could. You could do flexible hours in backfill with S R O and various things to accommodate.
If you felt like you wanted an additional presence or something, yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
And this additional person. Oh, what union would they be representing or, you know, what staffing?
They're probably our, R E S P union, educational support person.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, so we want to make a motion for an additional security personnel to high school.
They'll move.
I'll second that.
I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we're gonna wait on. Fencing costs. Um, and then we can. Do we have more discussion about?
Can we do that? Interrupt you. Like if we knew what that bid was. Next week, for example, can we approve that? Via email prior to a month from now, it's maybe, if, is that hard to get?
You have to, you have to call me.
We have to do a public, publicly.
Do a Zoom meeting.
Okay, but is the fencing, it's not like the phone thing. We just take six months to get, it's fencing.
Well, fencing, for whatever reason, so far has been fairly easy for them to get.
Okay, so we don't need to do this, but so.
If we approved it mid-July, they could probably get. On their way before school started.
Yeah, Schale's fence has been pretty quick to be able to get supplies lately, if that's ends up being the, who wins the bid, so.
Fair enough.
Okay. All right, moving on, student fees.
Michael, you have Sean's coffee.
Don, I did Sean and get Sean's coffee.
I Kim's. I really owe partial, like Jill and I have to share coffee. This wasn't a one person. And a shout out to Mr. York for helping us find some of this data too. So uploaded. Documents, one is our new revised proposal.
So there, you'll find two documents. The first is a school fees document for twenty two, twenty three. Second draft, what you'll notice it has changed on the second draft is removed to fees after Shauna's research. Um, and learning that those fees haven't been collected for many years. We decided it was time to just remove them from the list altogether. And so that is the instrument fee and the cleaning, uniform cleaning fee. So the recommendation is to just strike those since we're not collecting them anyway. And then your questions at the previous meeting had to do with what is the impact of having waived? The pay to play fee. So the second document that. Is there is, are the participation numbers. If you're like me, you're gonna have to like bump up the font a little bit. And to be able to read them, the two blue columns represent the. Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year. And then the current school year. Um, I will cut to the chase and tell you that all the, the total number of participants looks significantly higher. Um, this, this school year, it is a bit deceiving because in the eighteen nineteen school year. Band students and drama students were not part of that electronic record. And so. Band alone was two hundred and sixty six students and drama this year was seventy students. So that can be a pretty significant impact. And the other thing noticeable is that there is not consistency. Between sports from those two person years related to, did the numbers go up, did the numbers go down? So for example, football this year has grown significantly. But girls' basketball, for example, is much lower than it was in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. So there was really not a consistent. Pattern. So I'm not sure how much it was really gonna help you in. Creating, you know, forming your decision. Um, but it's interesting nonetheless.
Thank you. Haven't said that. Thank you for collecting the data.
Okay, do we, your motion to approve the updated school fees? As presented.
Is Neil show move?
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, do you have a discussion?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
It seems like at the last, I mean, the question was about the total amount that's gonna, would come into these fees. And overall, I don't think it, it's.
Well. Fifteen sixty is changing it. Because that is the Senate bill that is requiring, allows us to waive the fees. For students who qualify for free, if they allow us to share information. So it's a big unknown. When word gets out that that's an option, I think a lot of families are gonna take advantage of that. Um, and they're gonna be waived anyway. So I, I mean, I could do the calculation of what our revenue was in eighteen nineteen, but that's not gonna compare at all, stop. So I, I mean, I could do the calculation of what our revenue was in eighteen nineteen, but that's not gonna compare our whole staff goals to current because that sixteen sixty is an option now to allow fees to be waived um for students.
Yeah. So, but it requires that they've requested it?
Yep. So what happened is when a both forms are always available for information sharing. But when a family qualifies for free or reduced, they get a letter stating that they qualify. And then they get a second letter saying, oh, by the way, because you qualified, you can waive ASB fees. Um, but food service being a national federal program doesn't allow us to just share that data, even though it's basically with ourselves. So a parent basically has to say, you could take this information from our national program and share it with your activities in ASB office at your buildings. Um, but because we cannot just tell, and we do, we have families spell it out and return it or be like, does this really mean? Like, I don't have to pay my club dues or this fee. I and parents are grateful. And at the high school, if Bridget becomes aware of a family that's in that situation, she'll be like, hey, do you want to take this home to your parent? And.
It's a.
It's a it's a newer process, sixteen sixty, we just implemented it last year. So I think um as it becomes more known, it's gonna obviously be more used when families become aware. And we actually had two families contacting me this year and be like, I just found out if I qualified, I don't have to pay this fee. And I never really wanted to do that for food because my kid doesn't eat at school, but can wait till we get this approved, so then my fees will be waived, so.
But we haven't been charged charging those fees for two years anyway, right?
Correct.
If we waive the fees, they're not gonna.
But they don't have to pay their ASB fees. They go at the high school, we're charging club dues. We haven't waived those, but they don't have to pay their club dues. It it's more than just pay-to-play.
And we do make and receive additional lap funds for students who have identified as reduced lunch when we get to certain levels. And we are borderline in basically all four schools in receiving those additional lap funds.
I I maybe I'm completely misunderstanding, but I thought we waived the fees these last couple of years. Are you saying we didn't waive?
Not for club national dues. Um, that would have been a significant, I we would not have, we would probably not be able to sustain it for one year if we included club dues.
Okay.
So that's why we did it is because there's it's not something we could just say, we don't have to pay this anymore. It's we are, the clubs are still gonna owe those dues to the national organizations.
Okay, um, well. I guess in my mind, we have the resources to keep it at the level that we're at this last year. Um, last two years, that's what I heard at class meeting, and I would probably ask that we, my, I guess my viewpoint is that we keep it as it is. Um, I think our families, you know, it it only seems like twenty dollars or fifteen dollars or, you know, gas is five dollars again.
And is the motion on the table is to to continue to waive those?
I thought it was to do something to go back to what we were before.
Let's stick and.
Continue.
Right or wrong?
Well, there's a new proposal before you tonight that has additional waivers that were not there two weeks after we did further research.
Okay.
And with two additional waivers to district fees, we were waving and removal of two altogether.
But pay-to-play is the same as it was before.
Pay-to-play is still the same, but.
Which is waived.
Two additional.
Is what?
To waive again.
Okay.
And a request to remove two fees and this one from two weeks.
The instrument use and the uniform cleaning, because we hadn't been collecting those. They were on the list, but we never collected them.
So the fees will be waived like they were last year.
Yeah.
In addition to two more. Okay. Yes, you got my vote. Sorry about all that. No.
I'll vote again. Uh, favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Perfect, all right. Uh, curriculum adoption social studies. This was our meeting last.
Yes, so this is, uh, you know, the lot, the last couple of meetings, I gave you the middle school uh recommendation, the high school recommendation. And um, this is uh where it comes down to to adopt those materials officially. And so um, I have uh provided the the prices uh there in order to for the adoption to occur in six twelve. So.
Any questions?
Become more expensive. Have to say.
Yeah. And I like, you know, online for, you know, subscription for is good for eight years, great.
Yeah, so I did go ahead and make sure we did subscription for the length of it. Um, I've already, I've actually already talked to Ed. I I I think we'll go to save four or five thousand dollars off that by going down to Portland to pick up the materials. Um, uh, many of the materials, at least one of the, one of the sets, so. Get those doors when you're done. We may, we may come up at the same time. But that, you know, the the trailer, uh, the cargo trailer that Ed purchased, which was out at Sweet Day and all that, we. He and I talked and I'm like, okay, so I need you to buy a trailer that I can go pick up cricket materials in as well. So there there's multiple uses for that, that trailer. It definitely pays for itself, that's for sure, so.
Any questions, discussion? Yeah, I gotta get a motion to approve the curriculum adoption six twelve social study materials.
Don't move.
Neil, I'll second.
All right, moving second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Substitute Senate Bill fifty thirty, support student well-being.
All right, we have Laura here to talk to us about this. So this was the um comprehensive school counseling program transition plan. Um, the um, it's not the actual comprehensive school counseling plan yet. It's just a transition plan. And then attached to that is the new policy and procedure um around uh comprehensive school counseling. It's no longer guidance and it's just counseling. And uh, so some of the basics of this is talking about um ensuring that we're working on social and emotional standards for the district. Um, uh, which is like kind of a percent of a big part of what we talked about today. Um, as well as moving uh forward with the work of our counselors to get them to a place where uh they're following what's called the eighty-twenty, where eighty percent of their time is direct and indirect services to students. And then other twenty percent of their time may be paperwork or other things or any kind, any kind types of work that we all end up doing, you know, playground duty or whatever. Um, and ensuring that our counselors are doing, focusing their time on students. Um, so that's the very short version of it. Um, are there any questions or any more detail you would like that, Matt?
I think you've answered this last time. Um, just remember being struck by the eighty-twenty. I mean, do we have the capacity to to give eighty percent? For students.
So I'm gonna tell you, there there's actually a change in the answer since last time, so you've re answered the question. So one of the things we're doing at the high school is we're, um, one of our our folks at the high school left. Um, and she has a different, she's the um school. Her title called is a student support specialist. Yeah, students support specialist. So um Lisa Wilson has resigned to take in a position at a different location. So her posting, what we did with that posting was added some of the pieces that the counselors have been previously doing that would cause some discrepancy in that eighty-twenty. So this new person will be able to do some of that. So the high school counselors should be able to um have more capacity to move towards this eighty-twenty. We're still doing time studies to determine where we're at right now to figure out what we really need to do to get there, but that gives some capacity at the high school. Um, the other buildings, we're doing that time study as well and figuring out where we are. Um, until we have that information, we don't really know how far we are from where we need to be. So, but it's that forward thinking of um of Mike at the high school to make sure that that posting had the right information to make sure that'll help us a little bit with that.
That's great. Any questions? Do we need to approve the transition plan or all three? All three? Right, so we'll start with the comprehensive school counseling program. I'll move to approve the comprehensive school counseling program as presented.
That's the policy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, your second?
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, second is the comprehensive school counseling plan.
Resolution.
Resolution twenty-two dash fifteen. Is Neil show moved? All right, uh, little seconds.
Second. Oh, you said these, I got these, yeah, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, and then we have the school board comprehensive uh school counseling program transition plan. Um, move to approve the transition plan.
I'll move. I'll second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approved. Thank you.
Just to add to that, we will be completing the comprehensive school counseling uh program. There there's there's gonna be a plan there. Um, and I figured Jennifer should at least officially be here for, you know, a couple of minutes before I say, hey, we need to do this. So, but we will be working on fishing that up as a cabinet this summer. Um, and then we'll just, we'll keep you in the loop and and refers to this work as I post for.
Great. Thank you. All right, item E, uh, resolution for teacher assignments.
So each time we update this document, you have to approve again the resolution. And so you'll see the highlighted staff members, their preschool teacher and another individual who worked in a long-term substitute capacity. So we need to notify the board officially that they were out of endorsement in those position.
Kim, can you remind us, only because I looked at the very top and I see Dina, who I think is wonderful. Endorsement science, but assignment is special ed. Don't they, they have so much time to get their assignment credentials, or how do we do that?
So in her specific instance, she's in program to get that endorsement. Um, so special ed and bilingual are unique, that you do only have a certain amount of time for that. The other ones, they just have to have plans in place with their building administrators of how they're going to become proficient in teaching that. Um, some, uh, some people are truly trying to get those endorsements, but some people are like, we need one period of an English teacher. Like who's willing to give it a try for a year, because oftentimes the next year it's not. So each person is really unique circumstance.
Okay, and and that special ed caught me because I could imagine that's the.
So that one's unique. So she's actually conditionally certified, so she has an endorsement instead. It's just conditional, which is why you're happy to improve it.
Okay, all right.
And these are tools that we're doing. These are for people that are doing work for the school district outside of their certification, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any questions on the update? Teacher assignment? That I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash fourteen, assignment of teachers unendorsed.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You posed? Okay, um, some new business. We had the Eagle Scout presentation earlier. Isaac was great, very cool. Presentations, we'll move on to expenditures. Got a few CTE related.
The first two um are fall under Mankis Grant areas, and so I'll let her speak to elevation, education and paper.
Sure. So um elevation education, I believe is the first one on there. This is a data management and resource platform, kind of rolled into one specifically to address the needs and program requirements for our students that are multilingual learners that are either in program for multilingual learners or have exited within the last four years. So there are a lot of state and federal requirements regarding the monitoring of these students. Uh, the goals that we set for them, the progress that that we make, or so. Um, uh, just a lot of of nuances for that. Uh, the second piece of of that is a challenge for for that department and for those teachers is the um in in the the uh, the efforts to really try to make a very inclusive and heterogeneous classroom. Our Yale students obviously are not concentrated under one or two teachers. Yeah, per grade level, they're around between like four and five teachers per grade level. Um, which then gives four or five teachers per grade level for the Yale teacher to have to consult with and collaborate with and coach as far as best practices for their students. One of the things I did mention at kind of in the rationale in that first piece is that our Yale population are not our, uh, so when I say Yale population, that are students that are being served in the multilingual program, which means that they are tested annually and have not yet mastered proficiency in the English language in reading, writing, listening and speaking. So just because you are a multilingual student does not necessarily mean that you are in program to be a multi in in the multilingual program. You could have exited out or you were proficient in in the English language coming in and didn't need the program. Um, it has, I I have data from from eight years that I have been here. Um, and that it was at five point five percent uh eight years ago uh was the percentage of our students we served in program. Um, we are now at this past year at eleven point eight percent, so we have more than doubled uh since since I have been here. That does not include the students that have exited out of program that we monitor for four years. So if you were to add our multilingual students in program plus our monitoring, we are close to eighteen percent of our student population is in program or within five years of being in program for our multilingual, which is a significant increase. It's why I've come to you about dual language and all some of these other things that we're that we're, we're, we're going to do to try to meet the requirements. So this data platform, which is gonna be funded out of our state bilingual uh transitional bilingual multilingual dollars, is really there to help our Yale teachers and our Yale clerical staff, Karen, um, manage the workload of of such an increase in students. Happy to answer your question.
And this is funded through a multilingual grant funding?
This is a three-year purchase, um, and they gave us a discount because it's three years. I've learned, I've learned from, I've learned from Justin.
Cash in hand.
Any questions? You want to make a motion?
I'll move.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The next expenditure is for a company called Paper. Paper is an online homework help slash tutoring program that is offered that we are anticipating offering to all of our students in grade six through twelve. So uh there are multi, multi steps to this, to this program or benefits to this program. But one of the things that we received feedback from, from when we did our uh learning loss uh survey that we did with parents, when we did a thought exchange about a year ago about what they felt were some things that they would like to see as far as how we would uh combat the disruptive learning of our students. Uh, was this idea of homework help, an additional tutoring. That same theme came up when we surveyed our parents at conferences. So we did a family engagement survey at parent-teacher conferences, and that same theme showed up as one of the the higher needs that our parents felt uh was something that they would like us to see to to address the disrupt disruptive learning of our students. So um, we uh attached uh and and learned about a couple of different tutoring programs. But uh Paper is the one that I'm bringing a recommendation to you. So this is a chat-based function, a chat-based twenty-four-hour tutoring and homework help support for our students in middle school and high school um at any subjects, and it is a multilingual support. So you could chat and receive support in both English and or Spanish. There's other couple of languages, but those are the two that we would use. Um, what it is based on, it is not a, here's my problem, what's the answer? It's based on what they call a Socratic method of questioning, which really is getting the kids to find the answers themselves. Questioning them and supporting them to help them discover what the answer is, whether it be in science or social studies, history, math. So it's it's a way to teach the kids um virtually through through chat. Um, it is a, like I said, computer. Um, it is a, uh, like I said, computer-based or web-based, as I guess would probably be the more correct term. Because you can access it, not just only on a computer or Chromebook, but a student can log in from their Apple, their iPhone. Or their Android phone and then chat with, with the virtual tutor at two o'clock in the morning. And that's, cause that's usually when high school kids are probably doing some of their homework, if they're two o'clock in the morning. There is also another feature for essay help. So for example, if a student has an essay. That they need to, to work on for like their English ten class, they can upload that essay and within twenty-four hours, they will get feedback. On their first draft and say, yeah, th- th- these are some suggestions that you would be able to, to do to kind of beef up the survey. There is some interaction between paper, the company and teachers. So teachers are able to log in and look to see who's accessing paper. What are some of the, the spec points that they have? What are some of the insights that the tutor was able to, to, um. To, to gain by having that chat with, with, uh, with the student. And then also they're able to see the draft and the feedback given to them for essays as well, so. Um, there are lots of different multiple uses, but I think what originally, yeah, spurred us into this was. Was the communities and the families, uh, desire to see some type of a homework help, um, tutoring that is. Accessible to kids, not just right after school or right before school.
So we, we have historically, you know, had students who have been really active in clubs and activities, who. Feel like, like I could use that math help after school, but I want to go to practice. And so this provides an option for, for students like that, um, as well as students who, um. Can't make arrangements, or we just haven't been able to provide nearly as much after-school busing support as we've been able to in the past because of lack of drivers. So this, um, takes care of that barrier. The barrier it does not overcome, however, is students who, who don't have internet access, unless they have. So access that they can.
I, I do also want to mention that, uh, we, uh, we also did a demonstration with the teacher leaders at both the middle school and the high school. So that it'll instructional teacher leaders, uh, as far as what this program was, the benefits of it. They really asked, I think, some of the questions, I think Justin was part of that, that conversation, and we're pretty supportive. I felt like this was going to be a benefit.
There's not a way of piloting, I imagine, to see if it's going to actually be used, or have we talked to other districts?
No, we, we, we have talked to, you know, we, we have, we have talked to other, other districts. Um, i- in fact, uh, Clover Park has, has used it quite well. We, we actually have some connections of some employees that used to work for us that didn't work there. And, and they said it's, it's been a great product for the high school students. Um, middle school's done, done quite well with it in their district. Uh, Mike reached out to a, a principal, um, at, at a high school at North that, that he knows really well. And, and he's like, our, i- it's had a rough, a rough start at their high school, but their middle school has used. I mean, they've, they've got over fifty percent of the kids have accessed it at their middle school. Um, and, and so when you look at, um, when you look at the number, the number is a three-year contract. Um, and, and when we, when we start really.
Dividing this out by students.
Yeah.
And by hour, um, I think, um, Justin, you're.
I, I, I figured out that that number is an hour of tutoring per kid, six through twelve.
Is what that cost would be for three years. If we, so if we got every student to access that for one hour, um, a year for the next three years, it would, that would.
Yeah.
For it. Um, I think when you do start pricing that out over three years and how many kids that, that we do. Uh, it does become a little bit easier to swallow as far as the, the number goes. Um, one of the things that I, I would caution about a pilot when it is a service that, um, we don't have. We only have so much control about what kids are going to use, you know, and as far as, we're not going to go to their homes and be like, login to paper right now, types of things. It is going to take a bit to, to, to get kids used to this. I really do also think that it's going to take some teachers. Uh, really pushing this into, so I'm going to do an essay. I need you to go upload that to paper and then, you know, get, get the feedback and I want to see that feedback kind of, you know, in there. So I think that there are some things that we can do on a district side to encourage the use of it. And I really do think once, once we get kids used to that, they're going to continue to use it on their own. They're going to continue to self-advocate for, for the help that they need, um. But it's a lot of that messaging that version that I do.
And I think there's a parent component that is, that's the companion piece to that. So you do have to provide some instructional time to teach kids how to use it and access it and then check in on it. To encourage it, but I think we also need to provide parent opportunities to learn about the tool, um. So that they realize that it's out there and available, and their kids like, I don't know what to do, I don't know either. Okay, let's, let's log in.
And in this particular case, it would be a single sign-on. So once they log in their Chromebook, they, they hit the paper icon, they'd go to it. Parents can be asking the questions and get the feed, get the Socratic feedback. Well, okay, this is what the truth is asking. So now it's more of a, rather than, than parent and kid doing this, hopefully we're having better conversations and we're, we're saving that relationship for. Other family issues, not, not math, not English.
Not, I, I can tell you right now, there is at least eight English papers I would have loved to have it as.
One, one of the things that the middle school, I believe, came up with is, uh, when they were brainstorming solutions, when the middle school teachers listened, is we do do. For some of our middle school students that, uh, roughly, um, we have an obviously with, with, with COVID, but that, that is coming back. Um, we roughly have about two staff members that, that two to three, that, that, uh, EA's that do an hour after school, Monday, Wednesdays. And, um, serve around twenty kids. The thought was, is that we could increase that capacity and the EAs could really be there to monitor. Kids as they are going onto paper to get that access to it. So it's a way of continuing to use, you know, both programs to serve more kids in a little bit more of a direct service versus. A, a student or, or a family independently logging in on themselves. So I think, um. It's, it's, I don't think it's something that would buy, be like, here's paper, use it as you want. I think it is going to require, um, some, some really intentional moves. In order to make sure that we're getting our bank for our buck.
The S R funds that we have do require us to, to use twenty percent of the funding. In a way that would extend learning opportunities, and so this fulfills that requirement as well, and so that helps.
The other districts have found that it did get good uptick.
Yeah, it, it will, and, and like I said, we can't provide enough. Staff tutoring.
Right.
For kids at the right times that they needed, and then, and that, I mean, e- even at the high school, we offered, you know, an hour a day after school, two days a week. And that's not always when kids need it, you know, so.
I'm kind of impressed by the company that calls themselves paper, that's pretty.
It's grossing me off every single time. Kind of like the yellow truck that's not really yellow.
Where are these teachers from? Uh, are they United States? I mean, I'm taking, I'm taking, uh. I'm having technical support issues at three thirty in the morning, I'm talking to somebody I can't understand.
No, you're, you're chatting. There's no video. This kid's don't like video.
Texting thing?
He's texting. It's what kids like.
Oh, yeah. They do it all night long.
Now they can do it about homework and robot talk.
Yeah, okay, that makes things simpler.
Except for middle school, we turn the machines off at ten.
They are trained in that method, uh, but I think it, it ranges from a variety of people, I think, whether, yeah, college students. Uh, to, to teachers that choose to work virtually, you know, that have, you know, have, have said, you know. I, I'm kind of double teaching, and so I, you know, come in and I'm going to provide this opportunity to, to, to work from home. And, and do that virtually. So, so just, i- 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 it varies, but they are trained. The other thing that I will mention that. And I bring up is that this is all, um, secure and recorded. So we have access to, uh, every single chat that is done with, with our students. So, uh, which I think is an important security, as far as like, you know, who, who are, who are we getting, so, so, uh. Uh, that was kind of another pretty, um, heavy selling point as far as I think why we chose paper was. Um, the ability to go back and, and look at every single chat that was, 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 uh, conducted with our kids.
Um, last question, um, so there's tutoring, so it is with teachers that are doing this. Um, are these people that are doing this that we're going to be paying? Are these union positions?
No, so these are not, paper is not, shouldn't say that they're not union because I don't know if they're. Uh, so paper is, is a company and these, these tutors are employed by paper. So we, we are purchasing a per-student subscription, actually, yeah, based on that. And so that gives us unlimited access for the number of kids that we purchased, uh, you know, the tutoring for. Um, they may not hit the same person every single time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, if, if I'm, if I'm chatting with somebody at two o'clock in the morning on my math paper and then. Six o'clock, I gotta, you know, get this, get this, uh, science, you know, report done, and it may be somebody told, well, it will be probably somebody totally different. Cause it's math and science, two different subjects, so.
And I just, I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, this isn't being pushed through a right-to-work state where the people that are teaching and giving advice are making seven bucks an hour.
I guess I can't speak to that.
It's not seven bucks an hour. But they are, they're spread out, I, they'll, I, they have positions open by, based on region, they have positions open based on. Based on swing shift and graveyard and day shift, so, yep.
But they're going to set their standards on the quality of the.
Yeah.
Delivery and, and they're going to recruit and retain.
Yep.
And I, I, I do, I do want to correct, I'm, the, uh, these are not, these are not necessarily certified teachers, but they are trained tutors. So, so I want to make that distinction, because, yeah, because I think you don't have to be a certified teacher to be a teacher. Um, but, uh, but I did want to make that distinction, so I didn't want to mislead you at all.
A lot of grad, there's a lot of grad.
A lot of college students.
A lot of grads, is that what it is? Yeah.
And it'll be at three thirty in the morning.
Yeah, and, and they specialize in some area, you know, they're.
Well, what a great way of. I'm going to put on my resume that I was a tutor.
Or I'm a physics major.
Training hours, training time and stuff.
Physics, that's all I take are the physics questions.
Just want to make sure that people aren't being taken advantage of.
Oh.
Sounds good to me.
I will, I will say that the S R fund is when we do make a board approval, we have to call out that it is a sole source. Um, which, uh, sole source means that it's a unique program, although there are many tutoring programs out there. The, uh, the, the benefits that we saw from paper are, we're determining our sole source. So, and that's just a federal compliance thing, so when you use federal money, we have to, to, uh, distinguish that, otherwise we go out with it, so.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, uh. No, want to make a motion for the expenditure for paper? Buy some paper?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Spass, alright, so we have, we have two more. Next one up above on the list is twenty-five thousand dollars to purchase a large format printer for the new CTE business and marketing class.
So the, the good news is Kevin and I, uh, Wilson and I had a conversation about this, so it's perfect timing. Um, so, uh, Bridget Morris, our, our new business and marketing teacher, um, is, is already up and running. Go and let's get some program on. So, um, Kevin and Bridget actually called on, uh, Tom Alderson to come in. Um, from Awards West, if, if you know where Awards West is, and, and asked if he would, uh, be an advisor. Uh, on some things that, uh, Bridget wanted to get, get up and running, and, and his suggestion. Um, as a business, from a business and marketing standpoint, that the classes can do a sign, a signed job, signed business. Um, and suggested this printer, um, it's the same, same printer that he suggested for, um, WF West to, to get. And it actually does some things that, um, he doesn't have the ability to do in his shop. So certain things, um, he, he actually, um, has WF West, he contracts with them to do some of the. Things that people buy from WF West to do for them, and he says, if you guys get good, you do this, you do that, and you're going to be able to make all your own science for your own district. And then also there would come, comes a point in time that if I'm so swamped, I need more things, I'd be willing to contract with you guys. Um, and, and as long as quality, quality control works out and everything. So Bridget and Kevin are actually super excited, um, to be able to use. Use that as the business to do, to do the marketing from, to do the, to do the entrepreneurship from, so. Uh, and, and like I said, it's an industry standard, it's a, it's a tech printer he would put in his own professional shop, so.
And the funding, the CTE is, doesn't there CTE funding?
Printer?
Yes, it's a large format printer that'll make, um, make signage.
Am I reading the wrong thing? Sound energy?
Oh, it's the link, the language in the content box, you know, and there's hyperlink to see it. That will show you an example of what the printer looks like. So there is an attachment for this one because it's. Time to get a book.
It's expenditures, RHS HVAC system?
No.
No.
Oh, okay. It's a fancy color printer.
Okay, yes, a little beyond fancy.
It is like stickers and.
Oh, yeah, it'll.
Signage.
Exactly, it'll do stickers, it'll do signage, but. So, so I think some of those other things like, uh, you know, we want a new entrance sign, right? We can have them print one up. We would need to do, you know, a new, uh. You know, no drugs, no smoking, whatever signs, they can print that up. If we need stickers made, they can make those.
Yeah, window clings.
Window clings, yeah, they do all, they can do all sorts of stuff with it. Like the signs you're talking about, they're like metal signs, so these like, these like stickers you put on the metal and the plastic, that one does.
You know.
The vinyl.
Vinyl signs, that's, yeah, and then different, like banners.
Yes, t-shirts and sweatshirts, they have the press for that, but right now they order the emblems, and now they'll be able to make their own and then.
And so they'll be able to use this as a, as a full-on business.
Yeah.
And they'll actually get out and, 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 you know, Kevin was a little worried, you know, like, Tom, are we going to take you, like, you're not going to take business away from me. It's all good, I'm more than willing, he goes, and then you're basically, you're training kids up, so if I got a job opening. I may hire your kids right, right into my shop soon as they graduate, so, yep. Works well. By a printer.
Any other discussion? Alright, I will move to, uh, to prove the expenditure up to twenty-five thousand dollars for a large format printer, CTE business and marketing class. You have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Alright, now last one is HVAC system, uh, RHS.
Alright, so the first one, but then the next two attachments are the. The, the documentation to the second bid and the refusal to, so it's the support documentation. All scanned together. So this is one that, um, Dan from Ed's department. Was gracious this afternoon and helped to pull together the paperwork so that we would have it for tonight. So, um, two, two bids and a refusal to bid to, to, um. As part of the documentation there, and, um. Actual HVAC system amount is. Um, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars plus tax and bond to upgrade the heating and cooling HVAC control system. At Rochester High School. Jill, is the plan still to use S R two funds for this project?
Okay, and because of the cost, it requires three bids, but are. Or not?
The, um, and the reason why this is on here and not delayed until July is because. If this isn't fix, the likelihood of a, a major system failure, which will be incredibly expensive. There's something that Ed's worried about, so.
Sure.
Let's, let's get this taken care of as soon as possible.
Yeah, you don't want to be dealing with this in the fall. Or, or you're going to have to.
Do we have a heat pump that's out?
I don't know the specifics, to be quite honest.
It's the control panel, like, um. And we keep talking about the brain systems, um, but the, it's so outdated and, um. There are replacements parts, so it's just really fixing that so we can continue to control the HVAC system. Um, which is, oh, buttons and stuff.
Okay, so the main, the main board.
Yes.
That, that operates the system.
It's not talking to the HVAC system anymore, so this is going to allow us to just talk to the HVAC system without replacing the entire thing.
Okay, and what other upgrades need to be done to the district? Do we have anything else that is similar situation? Where the S R's funds, they're not going to last forever.
They are, and I believe all the other. They are, and I believe all the other buildings have recently.
They upgraded all those three for years.
We'll see though, in the S R three requests for some actuators and for some portable unit replacement, HVAC replacements for some of the portables. So that will be coming in an additional request at a later time.
Okay.
This was the urgent.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, I'll move to approve the expenditure for the RHS HVAC system. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, expenditure approved. VIBA resolutions.
Each year you see these.
Yep.
One for each of the different bargaining groups. Or different guests at all bargaining groups. Or different classification.
I mean, they get to make these choices. We're just acknowledging them more than anything else.
One vote at a time.
All right, so I'll move to approve resolution twenty two dash eleven.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will move to approve resolution twenty two dash twelve.
So move.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty two thirteen.
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty two fourteen.
So move.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Transportation RFP.
All right, Jill's been doing all the hard work.
We received one bid from a contractor per student, which is a shock in the current state of transportation around the country. It's a large increase, but we were kind of expecting it. They submitted a proposal and an alternate proposal to the specs that I had sent out. With the alternate proposal, they establish minimum daily routes, which is something we had agreed to during COVID when we stopped all bus routes. We established a minimum rate, so they're kind of mimicking what we had agreed to during COVID times in their second bid in the alternate proposal. And that alternate proposal allows them to reduce their rates slightly because they then don't have to fill up the bank for if we were to have to stop all our routes again, then having zero dollar income. So I understand the reasoning behind it because we spent months figuring that out during COVID. For just our regular hundred and eighty days to from bus routes with that alternative proposal, our annual increase is going to be just over five hundred thousand dollars. And theoretically, the state fully funds transportation, but that's not going to happen in year one for certain. The hourly rate for our trips, extracurricular sports trips increased quite significantly, but what we did in the RFP is built in some guards to the district. So like we had many days during the school year that they had to cancel routes. And so now they have to cancel routes due to lack of drivers or due to lack of equipment, they owe us a credit, which was not, didn't happen before. And we had to provide, we didn't provide transportation for almost every single spring athletic event. So if we ask for transportation for an extra trip and don't get it, we get a credit back for that. So while there are increases, we built in protections to the RFP for it to be one way. So we're going to pay them a minimum of twenty eight routes per day. But then if they say, so that would be if we all of a sudden said we only need twenty five routes, we would have to pay for twenty eight. But if we agree on twenty eight and they could only give twenty five, then we get a credit. So in this instance, it's going to go both ways.
And just also cover like food delivery and stuff also? Or is that a different type of contract that we were around with?
No, so we use this contract for food delivery, although in the food program, that's not allowable anymore. If there were to be another pandemic or crisis, they'd probably do waivers and we would be able to use some of these twenty year hubs for food delivery.
Yeah, I thought it was, that was pretty nice. We were able to keep people employed doing the bus service, alerting them that there was still income coming in for these families and stuff, just nothing. So.
Jill, how does the, how does the gas price factor in here?
So we put in an RFP, like a base rate, and when the rate goes over that, which they're over by two and a half dollars right now, we pay a premium amount.
Is that part of the five hundred and ten? That way it got so high as the gas?
No, that's just, so if you look at like a regular route, we are currently paying three hundred and twenty one dollars per route per day. And we have twenty eight routes. And so if that moves up to four thirty one, we're paying a hundred and ten dollars per day per twenty eight routes. So that adds up to over five hundred thousand just alone with those twenty eight routes.
Is it because they had to increase their salaries to get people to drive?
They, right before we issued this RFP, did a new collective bargaining agreement. And every step was raised five dollars per hour. But I will tell you, they are hiring like crazy, because when they hire drivers, in order for them to submit for the school bus driver permit, they have to have background clearance, which because they're a contractor, they can't look up themselves. So I look it up. And I, for a while, then looked one up for probably six months, and I'm probably averaging two to three a week right now.
So how does that figure in with the fuel surcharge? Is that like an overage thing that we're going to get hit with every year?
We do right now.
Is it monthly or is it?
You said it. Yep, it's monthly. So you set that in your RFP. So like the rate we are currently paying up of right now was set in twenty seventeen. We all know what we paid for fuel in twenty seventeen versus what we're paying today. So you kind of just realize that a five year contract, that that's going to increase. But then, like, there were times when fuel was really low in the last five years, so we didn't have an extra fee per month. This is our RFP. So I really took toll of that. That they do. And another thing that we had talked about, so intercoms on buses, so bus driver doesn't necessarily have to pull over and stand up and take off their seatbelt, they can just be like, hey, kid, you don't stop. So there's some added safety features put in here. They proposed some programs to assist families with rowing. So there are all things we can explore and added bonuses that we don't currently have. So. Besides just the dollar amount, they've added more safety features and different things for us.
So this extra five hundred, we have it, I'm assuming. We got to do it.
And how it works, we're unique because we are we're a contract district. So a lot, most districts have their own bus drivers, have their own buses. So they can be funded more on a true, through the actual expenditure, because you, like, we get funded for teachers, you know, we get one hundred and twenty five teachers, like, a normal, a school district that employs their own bus drivers would do the calculation based on kids, and you're going to get funded for twenty eight bus drivers. And then there's this formula that drives it. Well, we're kind of always a year behind because they'll look at our actual expenditures and then take our actual bus miles and make an adjustment in February of the following year. So for the last two years, we've actually been fully funded, but it's not going to fully cover this five hundred thousand dollars in year one. But eventually, in the very complicated formula that they have, we should be able to get back on track.
It'll catch up.
And partly, and like, they're proposing new buses. So some of the older buses will go and we'll get new ones. So the state is going to give us more money because we have newer buses. So I mean, there is going to be some catch up from the state to get a bus actual.
But it's always delayed.
Dumb question, but how does our bus, that's in our things, how does that fit into the bus service we have with for student?
So they, like these twenty eight routes that they're proposing, it's in their formula, but we end up getting a back credit for it. It's a very small, minimal amount, but they do all the maintenance on it. So mechanics are maintaining it. So it's a small credit we get, but we do get one.
Cool.
But in there, making sure it's safe to be on the road, so we wouldn't be able to operate them without them.
Yeah, awesome. Awesome.
All right, no other discussion? I'll move to approve the transportation RFP as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. All right. Last item, a contract inter-district cooperative agreement with Tumwater.
So this is a continuation of contract that is currently in place for a student that has some behavior challenges who previously attended that school district, came to us, needed two to three staff members to be with them. And was, we were unable to meet the student's needs. They agreed to take him back in his original school district and were contracting with them, and this allows this to continue into next.
But just an extension, no changes in cost. Any questions? If not, I move to approve the extension inter-local agreement with Tumwater School District, provide educational program for special education student during point two, point three school year.
Neil, so move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, or not. Okay. That brings us to our second opportunity for public inputs. Anybody online?
I guarantee it's the one who wants to talk.
We'll give him a minute.
Nah, you don't need to give him a minute.
He has to experience the very last one with me.
So speaking of that, it is Kim's last board meeting. We had a pleasure having a little going away ceremony a little week ago. I lost my composure.
I slept a two day.
That was a big ball, baby. Thank you for everything you've done for this community, this district, where you've, where you've left us. And everything you've grown here is the culture that we have here in Rochester Field of Training, something to be proud of. You led that.
Well, if I could have a minute or two, I would appreciate it because I felt like for the last two to three weeks, I have had this amazing privilege to have recognition. I feel like I'm going out like a queen. Been very well taken care of. And but what I haven't spent much time doing is just thanking everyone. Because you have been such a part of my growth and development and my life over last thirty two years. And before that, as a student, this was my second grade classroom in this space right here. And so it really has been a lifetime, majority of my lifetime in this district. And I couldn't have asked for a better experience. And I leave with just such fond memories and so much gratitude for for all the kids who taught me things and all the staff members who've taught me things and all the parents who've taught me things over the years and community members. And just the amazing staff I've been blessed to work beside all of these years. And so it's bittersweet, but what I will tell you is it has just been such a so reassuring to me to be able to leave this district because it's being left in such a losing hands. You know, I think this would be so much harder for me if I felt uncomfortable with who I'm leaving my baby with. But I just have the utmost confidence in Jennifer and her leadership ability and the team that I know that are going to help her to be successful. And so that makes things so much easier. So thank you to all of them. But in the end, you know, I think some of you guys heard it, my some words of wisdom that I shared, my last written correspondence to staff around. You know, it's the board of directors who direct the district, and it's the superintendent who signs the paycheck, but we work for the kids. But our members are really born to the life of a superintendent. And I am just so thankful for you and all the support you've given me, particularly in these really challenging times, the fact that as volunteer elected officials who volunteer your time, the fact that you did it just to say, I'm done. After a couple of words, not that I caught your mind on occasion perhaps, but you stuck with me and and were there to encourage me and hopefully help to encourage you along the way as well. But I felt like it's always really been a great team environment. And that's the other reason I know that Jennifer will do really well, because you'll have her back. She'll have yours. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Had you ever been the marshal in the parade before?
No, I thought, to be quite honest, it was quite an honor, but I felt like perhaps I was not old enough. As soon as I was asked, I'm like, oh, I thought that was something that old people do. Yeah, probably. Yes, we are. Okay. And then I was reminded that I am an old person.
I saw a picture. He had glasses on.
I did have my glasses. Yep. So that was an honor to do that.
Very cool.
But yeah.
I was cooking hamburgers. I was cooking hamburgers.
Thanks for your support all these years as well.
Glad that you included me in your farewell email.
My pleasure. Takes a village.
And you're not leaving our village, so. Thank you again. Congratulations, Jennifer. Thank you for accepting our offer. We're really excited that you're here.
Very fortunate, following Kim. Yeah, she's done amazing work and has what everybody in this district. So I look forward to working alongside everybody now. You know my number?
We all do. Okay.